I served on the school board for six years, one of them is chair, worked on the finance committee, the facilities committee as part of that work. Served on the comprehensive planning committee for some time and was also a member of the Board of Appeals. Also have served the town as an election clerk for a number of elections. My husband and I have two daughters, one is a sixth grader, soon to be seventh grader at BMS, and one is a freshman finishing freshman year at Morse, she'll be going to Morse as a sophomore next year. And the opportunity came up for this seat and I'm looking forward to serving. Any questions?
House of drilling questions for the candidate?
Yeah, I was thinking about the need for housing in Maine. And earlier this year, legislature was told by some group that did a housing assessment that Maine needed eighty-four thousand more units. I did the math and looking at the population of West Bath compared to the state, that would, if we did it just by population, that would be an extra hundred and twenty-five units in West Bath. So never mind the numbers, because that might be unrealistic. But do you feel that West Bath has any obligation to increase the housing stock? And if so, how would you recommend we do that?
I think it's a balanced approach. I don't think that we have the responsibility to take on all of it. I certainly won't want to strain any of the resources that we currently have. We have to be mindful of what our structures that we have in place can serve. For example, our school system, our fire department, the wear and tear on our roads and things like that. So while I think that it's important if ordinances allow and if, you know, available property or land allows to certainly welcome new housing units to West Bath, but I don't necessarily think, I don't want to act out of an obligation if that's not what is in the best interest of the town and the existing citizens and systems that we have in place to serve those citizens. Tough crowd.
I'll give you a tougher question.
Sure.
Michael Williams from Spine Road. The town is struggling with not having a way to enforce ordinances, with the exception of the shelf ordinance. Have you encountered that issue and if so, do you have any thoughts about how it might be solved?
Admittedly, I do not have a lot of experience with ordinances. Even though the serving on the school board is similar, where it's a structured board, it's sort of different issues that you're dealing with. Certainly wouldn't want to speak to anything that I'm not super familiar with. So I think that we employ people as a town that are sort of the experts in this and so rely on the ordinances, rely on our planning committee, rely on our town administrator, our codes enforcement, and see what avenues we have as far as enforcement of those. You're welcome.
We are doing an entire overview of the ordinances, so that's in queue.
It's a tough question.
Any other questions for the candidate? Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you very much.
Softballs will still freeze.
Although you can drop some cupcakes off here.
Thank you very much, everybody. Those eight four-mentioned kids keep me running.
Want me to get going? Do you want me to get going? Do you want to go or?
What's that? Yes. I'm gonna go ahead and call aboard to the meeting of the West Bath, June fifth meeting on West Bath Select Board. Ashley, please rise and flip the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of the warrants.
I believe that we approve them as presented.
I will second that. Call in favor.
Did you get this municipal special warrant also?
Oh, is that in this? Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's a warrant.
I would like to rescind that statement. I don't think it's included in that. So we have a warrant for the polls. So I'd like to read the warrant into the meeting. So this is Jonathan Maine as the consul, will be the consul of the town of West Bath. And the, of the state of Maine, we hereby identified it the warrant, to warrant the vote, voters of the town of West Bath and said county qualified by law, vote to town affairs to meet at the West Bath Fire Hall in said town on Tuesday, the seventeenth of June, 2025, at two o'clock in the afternoon. And then their act on the articles number one and two, all said articles set out to, with, one, to choose a ward to preside at the said meeting; two, to vote by secret ballot on the following special municipal election to nominate a select board member for the term ending November third, 2026. The polls will be open on June seventeenth, 2025, from two p.m. to seven p.m., located at the West Bath Fire Hall, 192 State Road, West Bath. Here is to fail out to make due return on the warrant with due due to the town clerk at this time of said meeting, given unto our hands this sixth day of June, 2025. Add that into our warrant submission.
I will configure the second function. All in favor?
Are we, any sort of upside operators?
Next item, two, approve the minutes for May fifteenth, 2025. I will go ahead and make the motion we approve.
I will second that.
All in favor? The next upcoming select board meeting is scheduled for July third, five thirty here at the town hall. Full business, item one, discuss boundary line with Bath. Authorities are still discussing and negotiating and sorting through drafts of maps.
Do you want to read this letter into record from Kristen?
That was not about the maps.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Well, it's on the boundary line.
Well, that was a...
Okay, never mind.
Mr. Anderson.
Are they talking or are they just waiting to talk?
Yes, they are. I just sent our new updated map from our mapping to her this week.
So...
She wanted to compare ours also.
What is ours? Our tax map?
Correct.
Which means absolutely nothing, but... How about a workshop for ten minutes next time around?
We have requested a workshop with the attorney. We're waiting for the election so that we have the newest select board under to be part of that. So the timing would probably work out for July's meeting.
In July?
Yeah.
Has, has the two members of the boards who voted previously moved from that position? Or are you just kind of waiting for everything to come by?
We're still waiting for some additional information from that as well. I know that they're looking at some of the satellite data and comparing that as well. So there's more going into this to see where...
They being sightlines or?
Well, sightlines, because we're looking, we're comparing what we have versus what they have and trying to determine as best we can where the properties fall in a boundary line.
And that, not to be blunt, but you're trying to be reasonable and that's not something you have the authority to be. Workshop it is.
I appreciate the comments, but I'll also suggest we're following the advice of our attorney.
And she's been actively involved. I, I don't see any delay coming from either town. I think the delay has come from submission of material to each of the towns from sightlines. So it's not, it's not, I don't, I don't see it as a tactic. I guess is the best way to put it. We had not received the information necessary for us to even make some value discussion or decision on it.
I want to put on the agenda, could there be just a rough description of the area that's being discussed? The boundary has been, sorry, started being...
Generally speaking, it's the area of Wing Farm up through into the backside of Old Pontcharrot.
Okay.
So that would be the northern boundary.
And probably there's, the waterways have changed over the years and...
It refers to a high watermark long before any of us were allowed.
We think that the, the actual monument is underwater.
Actually, I think it's under the travel tracks.
But I mean, so it's, it's, so we're trying to back into where it could be. I guess is the best way to look at that. Unless someone wants to go scoot, I get about eighteen inches of...
All right, we'll move on to item two of our plans.
A generator is gonna be installed June ninth, Monday.
Is that our last item?
Yes. We've just heard back today.
Item three, discuss town inventory. We did have a number of, a handful of pieces of computer, computer equipment that we have put up to public bid, type of option, however you want to describe it. They're in the lobby up front. There's a few computer monitors, keyboard, a mouse.
Some computers that need hard drives. I think we removed the hard drives.
Computer powered without hard drives.
But there's...
They're also...
Those tablets, two.
Also listed on the website as well, right?
Yes.
Any ideas in the market? Feel free to take a look.
Batteries, and they're not warranty?
No, they're wear-ins.
Whatever it is, you bet it in your own will. It's, it's, there's a battery pack, a battery pack up and stuff, but who knows? They, the shelf life of those can be questionable, so buyer beware on whatever you buy.
Bid's closed July third.
At what time?
Close of business.
Well, we have a meeting that night.
Three o'clock.
Okay. Because we have, because we have a meeting that night, so I'm sure bids will be divulged that evening then.
Next, the item four, work, public meeting versus remote meeting. We have things on the...
Suzanne's been trying one, she hasn't been able to meet with me.
Well, we can talk about that, you know, conceptually, what are we looking to achieve? Do we want to have it where people, similar to what the school's doing, which is public viewing? Or do we want to just have it as we're doing, you know, what we're doing now from a, where we're, we're posting it from that perspective? You know, the concern is having, monitoring attendees and then monitoring comments and questions and having to get involved in that process.
Yeah, it becomes infinitely more complex when we start adding interactive capabilities. Personally, I'd like to see us livestream and record first, get the bugs worked out there and then decide if there's a need or interest in an interactive format. We go with that next steps.
And we have probably eighty percent of the equipment necessary to pull this off already. We have an owl, just need to connect it via a remote meeting login and see what other items we need to have it functioning.
All right, item five, discuss digital storage.
I have been in contact with a company, Market Sports. I would like to talk with them before, because they do it for municipalities and they have quote, what's the deal there? So I'd like to talk with them before, just having somebody come in and scan.
We had a small water leak on the side that we have some from digital, or our hard copy documents. And that's where it kind of stemmed on making sure that we have preserved what we have as a town prior to having anything substantial. We think that that's where we're moving forward with that.
All right, we'll move on to the good stuff. New business. Item one, Steve Reno, road commissioner, about Burke Point Road.
Well, I met with Jeremy Pearl and he's got all the plans made. They were at the county meeting. I don't know if you got the chance to overlook him, but he has the bids elf, they're in process now. We should have results. But what it's gonna cost us in three weeks, two to three weeks. And then was to start the project probably the end of August.
And this is the bottom portion?
Yes.
Down to the...
The first portion.
Down to the camel's bants?
Yeah, we worked our way up.
Final page, sir.
You know, it's...
Hopefully.
Hopefully, but you never know what's gonna pop up. I think the road's gonna, is gonna be in really good shape and people should be happy for quite a while.
Well, we have someone who lives on it. What are your thoughts so far?
What's been done has been great. Much appreciated.
So while you're here, can we take down the posting signs?
Well, it's up to you. We've got thirteen inches of rain in the last month. I don't think this is coming down, no. I don't think our road is nice enough for it. And if somebody wants to travel the roads and work the roads, I would like a phone call first. So if it gets all damaged and stowed out, I know who did it. And I can warn them before they do it, so we can have a bone, you know, something to stand on. I'd like to stand on if things stay without happening.
So what's the concern? The, the side of the road or the...
The sides of the roads. I mean, I mean, it's done nothing but rain, 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 rain. So the road, I'd rather, you get off the shoulder, the whole road's gonna blow right out. So final, first point, probably sixty percent of our roads. There were nothing built right to begin with. I mean, the places that we have reconstructed, I had no concern. It's the places where we done. All it takes is a guy having one way, guy gets up a little bit too much, passes behind the hot tub, blows up the side of the road. So that's why I had not looked at the signs.
Trish, I guess it's more below a weather temperature.
And if they look at the signs, other dates have gone by now anyways. But I just, hopefully somebody will call and say, hey, what's going on? And we'll know who's traveling and what happened. If not, I have no idea. Until something happens and they get a phone call, hey, our road's blown out and nobody seems to know how it happened. So I figure if it's one week, we could pull it out and let people run free, but so five, every, for the last, what, thirteen Saturdays, it's rained over an inch?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having some work done on my house. I'm shocked that they might have already grounded it now.
Yeah, so it's a, it's an abnormal spring. Yeah, we don't have no frost at all, so I understand all that. But we could post them year-round. If we wanted to, drop the weight limit and stuff like that and then people would really be complaining. But try to keep what we have and the conditions are at right now.
Was it, should we post it with a different message on it then, the three roads that are posted? Because it's, right now it's, it's winter postage language if we're, or we, I mean, because we're, we're not, what's posted is not what we're trying to manage.
Well, maybe eventually we can get together and make some permanent signs after putting it in our barns or something.
We need an ordinance here, which don't have that as well, so.
So, yes, that could happen. But right now I don't have any of that, so I thought that was the best thing to do. I mean, you put a hundred thousand pound truck running back and forth on these roads, it's just, they're not made for. Then the council spend another three, four hundred thousand dollars if you feel this action.
Makes sense to me. Any other public comment on Spine Road?
Directly.
Sorry, that's what I meant.
One thing that did happen, okay, it's not really the road. I had no idea when or how. And I haven't talked to other neighbors, but on the guardrail, one of the guardrails has blown out. And I don't know what, I mean, something struck it.
That's, that seems to happen. I've been replacing a lot of street signs lately. And there's not really towns, road signs are street signs, and the people that have them pour a puzzle.
That's plowing, I have to say.
Yeah, I drive them, knock them over. I go over, get a phone call, Julia picks up a new sign. The old ones laying in the ditch, I'll fold it up. So I think we need to figure out something there, too. Once we put up...
Two-twenty. Just plug it right in and don't take it anymore.
I'm just saying. The town should be replacing people's driveway signs.
We should put a lookout and ordinance as well.
Because, I mean, we look back twenty signs a year, probably. Between the two.
So these are all for private roads?
No, no, well, there's between the two, main roads and private roads. And maybe they're very upset and somebody just don't object and go change it. But we don't, we don't have a staff to just go do that.
Anything else on Burke Point?
So our plan this year is that, and what we have left over in the budget, we gotta, we gotta finish oval, finish up oval eight on Spine Road. And then we're gonna spend the rest of our money and hot top trying to get the whole thing over late now. It's just things are going on and getting people, it's, so we're trying.
Thank you.
But I didn't notice anything that's been done so far. It's not been done very well. And I'll, I'll go look at that gathering, see if something that I can change now.
It's, it's laying there right on the pitch though.
They're probably lucky the guardrails were not... It wasn't there.
It wasn't, I didn't know we had it.
It's just a poor spot. I would, you know, have to say something soon.
Well, there was never a gathering or a full, big box or something. I just thought it'd be, people feel more secure.
A little too secure now because they're too fast.
Good for Stray. All right, let's move on to item two. Now we're actually gonna talk about Spine Road. We have Spine Road resident Michael Williams.
Hi. Those of you who are interested, you might want to come forward because this problem is not huge. And because I showed it to the select board, if you want to see it at the same time, feel free to come up. I think you folks got this from Julie and your computer, right? But I'll try to put it away and maybe if you slide over one, you can see where they're seeing this. Put it away that this helped. As Mr. Reno knows, in twenty-two thousand twenty-two, the town constructed a new larger ditch along our side of, of the Spine Road. And at the time, Mr. Reno and I had some disagreements about how much was appropriate to excavate and remove trees. However, neither the town nor we knew where the town property lines were. And as a result, the ditch went forward and is functional now in the configuration that Mr. Reno specified. We in turn, after the town completed its survey from our property line down to the town winging, which is over in this direction, we hired the same survey firm that the town had used to continue the survey beyond our property. So we could actually find out where the town property was and where the road was and where the ditch was. And this top drawing is the survey of our property line. And the blue is the ditch. And if you look at the details, you can see they surveyed top of embankment marked on the surveyor's marker. And the shaded in the, in the asphalt color is just that, is the asphalt road. And this, this black line with the dotted pieces is the boundary line. And as you can see, there's a fair amount of the blue ditch that's on our property. So we wanted to be constructive about this and come up with something that worked for the neighborhood, our three neighbors who are across the road from us and for us, and at the same time preserve the town's and the public's need for appropriate right of way and roadway. So we made, we're making a proposal to the town that this, and this proposal is marked in this lower square, as you study your drawings at some point. This red color is land that we are willing to give to the town. It goes back to a survey line that we had, which had, was put in to establish the minimum zoning requirement for our lot. So by doing this, we're not making our lot unbuildable. It'll remain a conforming lot. And we proposed that a slightly less amount of land be given back to the neighbors on the other side. That's marked in green. In other words, instead of moving the road, which is not a feasible idea, move the town's right of way. It still remains the forty feet that it currently is and was. It's just relocated across this radius in order to accommodate the facility that the town has already installed. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have, Mr. Reno in particular. I should introduce our neighbors, Nick and Ross, who are Los Calvin and Nick LaRocca from across the road. They are here. Our other neighbors have met with Julia and we are all in support of this idea. The group of the four families is willing to pay the survey and deed legal costs. In order to do this, our lawyers are recommending a release deed, which releases our interest and then the town in turn releases its interest in these parcels. So I know...
No, that's okay. Just can you fill in for people why it matters to us on the other side of the road?
Sure. What, what's not shown here, particularly in these two lots, is that this town property becomes, gets very close to the front doorstep of both of these houses. Because again, it was a surprise to all, I think, how far the roadway is actually off the town right of way. It's almost, as you can see, it's almost off the, the piece of land the town owns. And so these are front yards. In the case of Carl Morris' property, is where they parked the car, literally. And for Nick and Ross, it's very close to the corner of their porch. And for John McNary, it's bisecting a piece of deceptive field. So these are all factors that have encouraged us to try and work as a small group of neighbors to come up with a proactive solution.
So I guess I, you know, my questions are for you as the road commissioner. How does this, from setbacks to town's authority?
My question would be, so the road doesn't move and on the other side that you want the town to trade is, is still enough room for a ditch line and water to go down through?
Oh, yeah, you can see...
Nothing's really gonna change over there.
Yeah, you can see that there's a hole. If you look at this dotted lawn, this would be the new right of way. There's quite a bit of shoulder, grass area there for any structures you might need.
I think it's very, very nice of these people to do this. I think it's, that's very, that's worked out good because we really, I mean, I felt bad to have to approach what we did just to be able to save that road. And now he turns around and offering his deal. I think it's wonderful.
How much land do you, it is being proposed to be, like, what?
This pink section is about a tenth of an acre. And this is slightly less because of the radius involved.
So I guess I would say we'd be tough with the attorney also. Oh, you have it in here?
Yep, she has. She has renewed it and would be willing to draw up the necessary documents. It does require town meeting approval. That's what does.
Yeah, that does. But she said she'd be more than happy to work with Judy Metcalf.
Judy Metcalf is gonna be terrific.
But she didn't confirm that it does have to go to town meeting approval.
The only thing that I would request, I would like to see happen is to have it well pinned on both sides of the road down through there so we don't have any issues of, you know, we, I...
In the future?
Correct. As long as we still have our forty feet, I think that's, that's going to work out so much better because that's the side of the road that we're having trouble with.
This is pinned on both ends now.
Yeah.
These are not on this side, so there would be a question of the cost of pinning on.
Yeah, I would probably see if the, if the town can kick out and get in a few extra pins where it sets a radius.
Yeah.
It would help out. And to get it in, I reckon, that would be, that's a step in the right direction.
Okay?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's great compromise and certainly thank all of you for working together to fix Fort Worth's joy. And we.
Move forward to the new town meeting?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to work with the town attorney, the neighbors, their attorney, to sort out the necessary details to bring this to town.
And then I guess also find out what the cost would be to have the survey pins?
I'll amend my motion to equip, to make pin pricing.
So this work is already been done, the survey?
Well, only on one side, not on the other side.
It's, it's, the whole area has been surveyed.
But not pinned?
But not pinned, that's correct. So what would happen is the new right of way edges on the south that Mr. Renault is suggesting be pinned, that would require a trip out by the surveyor and they just locate their transit and then put it, put them in place.
They already have that pinned.
Okay, yeah, no, I got that from that perspective.
But, you know, surveys take a long time and.
Well, we have to wait till town meeting too, so.
Don't tell them that. Everything takes a long time, you know?
Well, so I mean, because it wouldn't happen until after town meetings, most likely next year or something.
We have time.
Did you say your motion?
Signed.
Motion made, signed, all of you. We'll get it done. Thank you.
Also, didn't you ask me if we could do it as a referendum at November? I have not asked about that.
Okay, let's, let's bore that about.
Because actually November is our town meeting, because that's where we elect our board. So we'll see if we can do that.
Yeah, sometimes you're able to do some of those, I see that, perhaps, yeah.
Would that require a hundred and seventeen signatures and?
Not if we initiate.
Okay.
All right, move on to item three, counting tax, one payment or two?
Or none.
Or zero.
Since it went up ten percent.
We did have a request sent to us from another town administrator who had a request from a private person who also happens to be a representative, asking if we would like to consider paying our county tax on payment or two. Apparently they're trying to change this to state law that now allows towns to pay two instead of a single payment.
I'm certainly not opposed with.
Slur payment, it doesn't say two, it could be four.
How, let's do that.
Yes, let's do that.
Let's do, because we can keep it in an account longer yet.
Yeah.
A return on it as well.
But they're just asking for every town in the county to ask your board for your input.
I think we would like multiple payments, we'll figure out how long we can stretch that out. So we don't ever have to take a tan again also.
Exactly.
So that is, because that costs money for the town.
I will pass that along.
We typically pay that in July or when, when we usually, when we do.
I mark it to the county October thirty-first. Three years.
I mean, the longer we have the money, the more interest we have.
Yeah, that's, that's a significant amount of money, so I'm not opposed to holding onto it.
Yep. Great, that brings us to item four, consider legal services contract or no. And we have another one-year agreement with the current firm and attorney.
I think we should move forward with, I think they've been very good.
It's less.
It's less.
Last year was fourteen hundred dollars, but. For Tina.
Yeah.
The only two that went up, per hour.
Yeah.
For partners in council.
Yeah.
That was two fifty-five and for associates was two fifty. Everything else?
Ten dollars an hour.
The others are staying the same.
Yeah.
So.
I've got a four hundred dollar coming.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm willing to make that.
I think, I think they've been very easy to work with.
Have we used any hours outside of the retainer last year?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know if you, if she was hearing need needs or.
Use the personnel stuff?
That wasn't the, that was a, a pre-contract? Actually, that was, I think it was pre-contract when we did that. And we do have a workshop pending with them also. But yeah, I, I hope that we renew the contract as of today.
I'll second that. Any other new business?
I have another new business, so we have a request to abate twelve dollars and fifty cents. The reason being is in foreclosure, we have to wait until it's completed, if we made in advance of that, it.
Bankruptcy.
The bankruptcy, it doesn't, to the entire tax base, which is just the one parcel. So now that it's completed, and we have a vacant request for twelve dollars and fifty cents, which I move that we approve.
I'll second that, on code.
That payment just came in today, that's where it's probably, and including that for four year end.
Yes, year end is ticking at, that's it.
Any other, other new business?
I think, you know, so where we are with year over year, this year end is going to be so easy. Well, it's just we, we didn't go to commitment until October or end of September last year. We should be able to go to commitment mid-July, you know, which is huge. Which we've just, we're on the ball, I guess, and we've completed all of the behind the scenes and Julie's done a fantastic job at it on keeping us on track, but we've, it's nice to, to give our taxpayers enough time to collect that for their October one due dates. And give them as advanced time as they need to pay that. So I think it's a huge statement on where we are, where we were, where we are, and I think it's a great opportunity for the community to tolerate it a little bit better.
Well, sir. Brings us to public comments, any member of the public wish to address us on any issues? All right, item five, future dead notice.
So I guess we'll see if you get feedback on the records maybe? So we're not having a meeting, this is our last meeting for June, until a new tax year. Because two weeks from now is June two and it's a holiday. And it's also year end, month end, so we've got other things that we need to focus on. So knowing that we have essentially a month from now, what else do we want to take, you know, make sure we have, maybe certainly have a follow-up on the referendum, if we can do that. Be nice to get that completed in November.
Maybe a legal workshop.
Yes.
On the vulnerability.
Um, that depends on your own, I will probably.
So is this something that we're doing after hours or during the day?
Well, I think you guys need to know better about everything.
After the time did during the day?
So you want to do during the day?
It's covered by their pin, isn't it?
Right, that's what I was thinking, and I'm thinking two hours is probably sufficient.
Not the week of July sixteen through twenty-fifth, anything else, she's available. So it's up to you guys to figure.
I'm traveling July, you're on, say that now, in his last words. You said, so not the week of the sixteenth?
Correct.
Or twenty, dead?
Sixteen to twenty-five.
Okay, for ten days, so. I know. I'm fine with the, you want to say July seventh? Does that work, is it Monday?
Um, that.
We'll see if that works for her for the, like, three o'clock, or whatever, back into two hours from what her schedule.
One o'clock.
Well, I don't think, what is, what's her hour, whatever, whatever her day ends?
I don't know, because I get emails at ten o'clock at night, so, and on Sundays.
Yeah, she does do a weekend, I still have her weekend hours.
So what was the day, July seventh?
July seventh, and then just back into like a two and a half hour time frame in the afternoon, yeah? Or the seventeenth, the seventeenth.
Down low she is.
Does the eight work for you too, like the Monday, Tuesday, whatever the beginning of the week is?
Yeah.
Seven or eight?
Monday, Tuesday's probably better because this Monday's a.
Okay, well, you say the eighth, then. That way it's, coming off of a holiday weekend, that's the weekend.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's more like a fun one. Any other recurring end of that? Select Board comments and announcements, just a reminder that the polls are open June seventeenth from two to seven at the firehouse.
Is there absentee ballot also or?
They're available.
Abstinent ballots are available.
You may just want to come in and vote in person, that's one question.
Yeah. Any other comments or announcements?
I have none.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to MRS A section four oh five six A for personnel evaluation.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Second.
I don't, I don't know where to wear, I think college will land anything, but there was a giant crane and it's a big.